...at the moment and move on with our town meeting. You need to know why I'm a little bit later than I normally am. And this is to do with something that's happening in Israel. I don't know whether you are aware, but this morning when I was looking at the news at about 4:00 a.m., it was announced that Israel is at war. Israel is at war. This is a statement from Prime Minister Netanyahu. I have been on the phone talking to various people with various security forces about things that may occur, may not occur. But this is something that I take seriously. I am a person who wants to be a part of the peace program. The peace program. And I'm looking for a way to find peace. So please understand that if there's some question as to where I stand on this, it is I want peace. And I hope that you'll achieve peace. Also, you will probably want to know a little bit about what's happening in Washington, D.C., where we are engaging in a level of fatuous folly, a level of inanity that borders on insanity. We are a ship without a rudder in the midst of a storm. We are trying our very best, I think, at least I am, to right this circumstance. But the truth is this, we, the House of Representatives, cannot do anything other than select a speaker at this time. We cannot do anything to fund the government. We cannot take any positions on what's happening in some other place at this time. The only thing we can do is select a person to act as speaker. We have a Speaker Pro Tempora. This is Mr. McHenry. And Mr. McHenry is also the chairperson of the committee that I happen to be a part of, the Financial Services Committee. But he can only convene us to select a speaker. So any of the things that you would want to see us do can be done, hopefully, if they are right and righteous, they can be done after we have selected the speaker. Now, just so that you'll get a real sense of what I mean by can't do. If we wanted to declare war right now, we could not. Because the Congress can only now select a speaker. The Congress has the power to declare war. But we cannot because of where we are in our life in terms of selecting persons, a person who has to become the leader of the House of Representatives. I have no idea as to who the speaker would be. There are many names that have been tossed about. I will wait, and I have one vote. And I assure you, I plan to be there to cast my vote unless I'm ill. There's some illness, some sickness, something, some intervening cause, something that I would call an exigency. If there's an exigency, then obviously I have to respond to the exigency. But other than that, I plan to be present to cast my vote. I've cast my votes for these issues since I've been in Congress, and this time should be no exception, warrant an exigency. Finally, this before we get into our meeting today. At some point, persons may have some questions that they'd like to ask. We have a process for doing this. We will assign a number, we'll have persons who raise their hands. Everybody will get a number who wants to ask a question. And then we'll take each person in order. If we start with number one, when we get to number, say, three, four, or five, and number one wants to ask another question, we will not come back to number one until we have gone through all of the other persons who have questions. You have been to meetings before, and I have too, where one person can dominate a meeting with questions. Well, there are many people who have good questions, and we should not assume that one person should have the opportunity to usurp the time and have all of his or her questions responded to before others have an opportunity to have their questions responded to. So we'll go through the list, and then we'll come back to number one and commit it. The next point in terms of housekeepers. When we allow you to ask your questions, we will not hand you a microphone. I have learned that you never give up the mic. We will hold on to it, and there are people who have tried to wrestle it from my hands. Not going to happen. So please, just know that we want to hear you, and it is our belief, or at least my belief, that we can hear you quite well holding the microphone for you. All of these things having been said, I want to thank all of you for being here on this Saturday morning. I trust that the breakfast, the food itself, is something that pleases you. All of this is being paid for with your tax dollars, with your tax dollars. And if there is somebody who disapproves of having this being paid for with your tax dollars, I trust you won't eat the meal. It just seems to me that if you don't want your tax dollars feeding people, you wouldn't eat the meal. But there are people who will eat the meal and then complain that the tax dollars were used. You all seem to be in a very positive mood, I appreciate this. But there are many things that we have to discuss, and some of them relate directly to something that's been happening in Missouri City. And I'm going to yield to some persons from Missouri City to make some comments about some of these things in just a moment. But there are some other things that I'd like to make sure that I get to before I go into these specific items. The specificities are important as they relate to Missouri City. But I want to get into just a couple of other things before we go to these things. So just bear with me for just a moment. And I'm going to also announce the attendance of a good many persons who hold public trust, who have taken the time from their day to be here with us this morning. People who own public trust usually have multiple places that they should be at any given time. And I respect their time, and we'll announce their presence and have some of them make comments in just a moment. But I want to start now by telling you about something that's important to you, it's important to me, and it's important to these elected officials, which is why I want to get to it immediately. It's called community project funding. Community project funding. Each member of Congress has, as of this day, the opportunity to direct funds to certain projects. These projects are things that we believe to be relevant, material, and necessary. I assure you, I take the opportunity to do this very seriously. And every project has my seal of approval. Now, it has my seal of approval because I'm the guy who ultimately is responsible for having made a decision to recommend to the Congress that a project be funded. To this day, we have had a total of $63,027 in community project funding. This is over a two-year period, this $63,027, just two years, and that would be 2022 and 2023. We just started doing this community project funding, so it's new. New, but still an old process. We used to call it earmarks. I still kind of see it as earmarks. But if it pleases people to say "community project funding", and if it pleases them to the extent that they will allow us to continue to do this, it's community project funding. I have no problem with the terminology. But I've said this so that some of the people who predate these two years will know that it's pretty much the same process that we've gone through in the past. So we have some $63 million that we have brought to the attention of persons for community project funding. And I have a list that is very long. I'm not going to go through the entirety of the list. But I do want you to know this. This $63.27 million is approximately 00094% of the funding for any given year, these two years. That's how much it is. So this does not break the bank, this community project funding. And it helps a lot of things, helps us to accomplish a lot of things that we want to do in our various neighborhoods. I'm mentioning this amount to you and the percentage of the millions, excuse me, the trillions of dollars that we have been spending because I want you to understand that this program is under assault. There are people who want to end it. They do. And I want you to be armed so that you can at least explain to people that this is not the thing that has caused the budget to get out of hand, if you believe it's out of hand. This is very small compared to other aspects of our funding. And I welcome and applaud on this because it says to me that you're saying about this community project funding. Very important. But to give you some idea, just some ideas to some of the things that we've done with community project funding dollars. We have accorded with the Assistants of Congress money for clinics. I'm looking at one particular clinic that got $2 million. We've helped the mayor with a complete communities program, $2 million. We have helped Houston Complete Projects. I have Houston, I have Missouri City, I have Stafford, I have Peril Man. I'm the only congressman in the area that I know of who goes into three different counties, Brazoria County, Harris County, and Fort Bend County. Three counties. A good deal of the congresspeople are in one county, Harris County. So I have three counties, and I've tried to serve all three of the counties that I have. We have helped with middle schools, we have helped with crime prevention, just millions of dollars that we have spent to improve the standing of areas that are important to us. And this would include $5 million to an area that we know as Missouri City. Missouri City received $5 million of this money for a park and ride. And I'm proud to tell you that Mayor Alakat is here, Councilperson Boni is here, other members are here. All of this is in place because I took the message to Congress, but they brought the message to me. And I appreciate the message that they brought to me. So at this moment, I'm going to ask the person from Missouri City, if you would please stand, Councilperson, Mayor from Missouri City, please stand. They deserve, as you mentioned, they deserve extensive appreciation because it was at their insistence that I was able to acquire the intelligence necessary to take this to the Congress of the United States of America. You need to know that people are working and getting things done. Unfortunately, we depend on a news media to call to our attention all of the things that people are doing. It doesn't always get called to your attention. So I want to take this moment to thank them for what they're doing to make it possible for me to serve you better. But I especially thank them for the service that they've been there to serve you better. Give them one more special appreciation. Mayor, if you can run, please, Councilmember Boni. The good news is that I don't have to give up the microphone because it's nailed down. I want the mayor to have a word. Thank you for coming this morning, mayor. Just have a quick word, if you would. And Councilmember Boni, I believe you were involved in helping with this earmark, excuse me, community project funding. There's somebody else that I may be missing who was directly involved. All are involved, but some people had a more hands-on experience. But because I appreciate everybody's involvement, everybody votes on these things, I'm going to ask anybody else to come up from Missouri City. All the other council members come up to, I don't want to slight anybody. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
My job is to first and foremost to welcome all of you to Missouri City. Thank you for being here, and I want to thank Congressman Green for taking this town hall to Missouri City. So we're excited that he has taken this to right here where we had our State of the City two weeks ago. Just a few notes, and I know that others will get into the details. But I can only speak for, since I've been elected as the mayor, which is in 2020, ending, towards the end. Since then, we got $6.9 million from the cause of Congressman's help through the ARPA funding, which we have used for the reasons what we could use that for. So I want to thank him for that $6.9 million. And as I said it before, some of that was going to go to the city of Stafford, but, you know, I made the deals back and forth. And it was a tough negotiation, but Congressman served for us. It doesn't stop there. So since I've been elected, $5 million with New Quest, as well as the Metro Garage and the parking that's coming right now to Fort Bend Toll Road, that is another $5 million. So you can, I want you to calculate this at the end of the day. 6.9 to 5 million, right? Now, it still doesn't stop there. The streets that we have been whispering, which you'll hear about it later today, and those, he paid for it himself to get those changed. Yes. And for all of you that's recording or writing down, yes, it came from himself, not from the taxpayers. So we're grateful for every aspect of it. And today, and it ends with, for me, one more point because otherwise it wouldn't be fair for me to talk about everything. We have a Freedom Tree Park in Lake Columbia subdivision, which Councilmember Boni and Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Distickley, Floyd Emery, has been working on for quite some time. But where the new park is going to be dedicated, which will be across from the actual tree, there is a piece of land that owned by Phillips 66. And without getting that, our dynamic project of the Freedom Tree Park will not go into place. With our then Parks Director, Jason Mangan, who is now an Assistant City Manager, wave your hand. There he is. With himself, working it through Councilmember Boni, reaching out to Congressman Green, had brought the Phillips 66 folks from, I believe it was Philadelphia or New Jersey or somewhere, came down to our parks and rec area to sign an official agreement without zero cost, handing that property over to Missouri City. I'm not sure if all of this was in his face, but it gives me the pleasure to say that Missouri City, everything that he has done so far, I have no idea how to pay it back. And we're just trying to figure out, but with his help, as you heard, three counties, several cities in Fort Bend County. But as the mayor of Missouri City with my colleagues by side, we owe a big gratitude to you for your help. Thank you so much. God bless. I'd like to ask Councilmember Boni to come over. And Councilmember, I want to say this as you're coming over because I want to have you go into some other areas as well. Councilmember Boni called to my attention that he was making a concerted effort to do something that I support totally, completely, and absolutely. I did this without any reservation, any hesitation, or any provocation. He embarked upon this mission to change the names of streets that were related to the Confederacy. And to do this required more than simply a desire. It required the cooperation of other members of the council. It required meeting with people in the community. And he has been stalwart in bringing this to fruition. I'm calling it to your attention first, depending where I stand on it, because this is a big event in Missouri City. This is something that is national scope. There is nothing wrong with people of African ancestry saying to others, "We don't want to live on a street named after a Grand Wizard of the KKK." And it would just seem to me that somebody would think that we ought to move forward, not only in Missouri City, I compliment Missouri City for what it's doing, but there are many places in the country where there is no movement. But we ought to want to move forward to correct this injustice. For edification purposes, most of these streets are named after Confederate soldiers. Now, friends, whether we like it or not, the Confederate military was fighting to maintain slavery, fighting to maintain rape, murder, fighting to maintain kidnapping. This is what they were fighting for. Now, I don't mind people having certain liberties with their explanations. But I just think you go too far that enslaved benefited from slavery. I think you go too far, which has been said by Fulton. I think you go too far when you say that the institution of slavery was involuntary relocation. I'm proud of the position that Missouri City's taken. That is my position. And in Congress, I have legislation pending to honor the enslaved people. The enslaved people who for more than 240 years provided free labor. America the beautiful is the beautiful America is because of their labor. It was built on their backs. They gave America a head start, and they ought to be appreciated. The unfortunate circumstances is we revere the enslavers and we rely on the enslaved. Some things bear repeating. We revere the Confederate soldiers and we rely on the people they sought to maintain enslaved. I have a legislation, there's a legislation to change that. In 1956, we gave Confederate soldiers something that only Congress can accord, a Congressional Gold Medal. The highest of Congressional's, Congressional Gold Medal was given to the Confederate soldiers in 1956. I just believe in my heart and heart, and I'll take it to my grave, if we can give Confederate soldiers who sought to maintain slavery a Congressional Gold Medal, the highest honor the Congress of the United States can accord, I believe we can give it to the persons who were enslaved, who built this country, who fought for this country, fought for it. So now, having said all of that, I want Mr. Boni, Councilperson Boni, to come forward and give his iteration of some of the things that happened out in Pittsburgh because I'm proudly associated with it, and I'm proudly associated with him. I'm proudly associated with each one of these persons standing before you because they have the courage to do what should have been done many years ago. Should have been done, should not have occurred, but they have the courage, they have the courage. So give Councilmember Boni his hand.
I'm trying to get as brief as possible. I think Mayor Alakat did a great job summarizing everything that the Congressman has done. Like you, Congressman, I too have just one vote. And in order for us to get anything done in Missouri City, the majority of us have to agree. And I'm very excited and proud that my colleagues and I, past and present, have supported this effort from day one, since it was brought forth, and unanimously supported the ability for us to lower the threshold in Missouri City. At one point, in order to change any streets or buildings in the city, it required 90% of the people on that street to agree. So in essence, if you have 10 houses on the street, nine out of those 10 have to say yes. You know how difficult that can be. Some of you have family members of organizations that you're part of, and you can't get nine out of 10 people free on anything, let alone the majority. So I'm so excited that my colleagues saw this as important enough to support. And so we have some of the people, and I don't know, Congressman, you're going to be acknowledging them later, but we have some individuals who spearheaded the changes on their streets once we as a council took action to lower the threshold. Boyd, run the field board here. I don't know where they are. Stand up. Once that threshold was lowered, they took it upon themselves to lead the charge, to change their streets, their respective streets, which were originally on Confederate Drive, and now they're on Prosperity. On two other streets, one called Confederate Court, and the other one was Confederate South. They're now Prosperity South and Prosperity Court. Then it didn't stop there. They kind of started the fire and spoke the community to bring forth changes. And it wasn't easy because everybody didn't agree. Not everybody wanted this, and it was a challenge for many of the other streets. But finally, one of the most, I think all of them are offensive, but one of the ones that Congressman mentioned earlier, which was named after the first Grand Wizard of the KKK, Nathan Bedford Forrest, who was a Confederate general, had been renamed. And so because of their leadership and working with other members on their respective streets, now we have, instead of Bedford Forrest Drive and Bedford Forrest Court, we have Liberty Way. And so I always say leadership matters, and who you vote for matters, elections matter. We hear it often. So I'm not passing out any material, but elections do matter, Congressman. And that's why you're in office, holding this town hall to inform the people of who you voted for and who was in office representing you. And I'm proud to serve with my colleagues on that. And I'll step away after, going back real quickly on Metro, dealing how we appreciate. Of course, we appreciate Congressman for what he did with the easement with Phillips 66. Mayor Pro Tem and I were sitting in a meeting with Jason, and Jason brought forth to us that, you know, we were having a challenge, that we would have to completely redo our plans and our vision for the Freedom Tree Park, which is going to be a phenomenal, phenomenal park. And I remember when, oh, Pearson family's here, okay. Where is the Pearson family? They were also instrumental in bringing forth the change on, there they are, yes. They're all around here, they're just getting one of our big rounds in the crowd, dog. They know I'm on Bedford Forrest, they're on Liberty Way. Thank you so much for being here. But Mayor Pro Tem at the time had approached me about trying to use my park zone money to try to fix the park, and you can't do that. But we figured out a way that we could collaboratively work together. And so we formed the Freedom Tree Park Committee where we chaired, and have been doing so since 2018. But we finally got some traction. We were able to get this money put into a bond referendum that you all, if you're a Missouri City resident, voted for. But we had this snag with the easement. And as we're sitting there trying to figure out if we're going to move and change our initial plans, I said, you know, I know who to call. Remember Jason? I said, and we called Congressman Green. And we got him on speakerphone right there and then, and he immediately agreed, as he always does, to work with us to try to make it happen. Him and his staff got with the executives at Phillips 66, and then they scheduled a meeting. We had this big, you know, presentation, we had a little band and drum line and everything in welcome in Missouri City. And once they got on the grounds and they understood the assignment, they agreed, and the rest is history. Thank you, Congressman Green, for helping us to now be able to move forward for what we know and believe will be a phenomenal park. But lastly, on the Metro bill, Mayor Alakat and I met with Bob Frye, former Mayor Bob Frye, who serves at our pleasure. Mayor, former Mayor Bob Frye, who serves at our pleasure on the Metro Board. And we were trying to get them to move forward with doing more for Missouri City because we've been paying into the Missouri Metro system since the late 70s, 1978 to be exact. And so we felt like Metro should be doing more for Missouri City and its residents. So we scheduled a meeting with Mayor Frye, got with a few of the other, I got with a few of the other Metro Board members, Troy Taylor and others. And they scheduled a meeting with Sanjay, who is the Metro Chair. And he met with us, and we met for, Mayor, I want to say over five hours. We met with over five hours with them, and we worked out the logistics as to what we wanted to have along with partnership with New Quest to put a parking lot, to take cars off the street and help people with greater mobility into Medical Center in downtown Houston. And so, of course, it was always pitting that when they had a shortage on funding to try to make that deal come to realization, who'd he reach out to? Reach out to Congressman Green for an earmark, I mean for a community project, funding project to make it happen. And so we thank you again for all that you do for Missouri City and for all of your constituents, whoever you represent in three camps. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the Pearson families and the Gilbo's to come up as we are having additional persons to speak. We're going to ask for you to come over and have a word. Mayor Matthew, I want you to know, we're going to call you up in just a minute, so everything's okay, all right? Don't send the Reynolds, we're going to be calling on you too.
Well, let me drop this down a little bit. I've had a real long speech to give, but Boni took all my time. Mine's going to be real short and hopefully of some importance. First of all, Congressman Green has been a great friend of Missouri City ever since I've been on the council back in 2011. Whenever we needed things done or we needed assistance, Congressman Green was always there to assist us. And as we talked about the funding that we've received because of his efforts, you know, we really applaud Congressman Green. We talked a little bit, our Councilman Boni talked a little bit about the Freedom Tree Park. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Lake Olympia HOA Board had an easement that was on the pathway that we are planning from Freedom Tree Park over to Community Park. And we asked them if they could release that easement, and they went to their board and they released that easement. So now we're easement free in Freedom Tree Park. So with us, thanks again Congressman Green, and always welcome to Missouri City.
We want to ask that our councilwomen come over, please. And one other time, of course, we'll start with her father and I are the best of friends. I don't talk to him lately. How is the judge?
He's wonderful. He takes home the golf.
Oh, he's a good judge. Judge Klausa, anybody remember Judge Klausa? This is the daughter of Judge Klausa is an outstanding councilwoman in her own right. Would you please have a clap?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to say thank you and express my gratitude and my accountability for just all that you are doing with us and for us. There have been times when you called me up, and when my phone rings and it says Congressman Al Green, I don't care what I'm doing, I stop and pick up the phone because when you call, you want something, you want to give, and we appreciate that. And so whatever we can do for you, please let us know. I'll keep my comments brief. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm honored now to present Councilwoman Brown Marshall. She has done an outstanding job in a very short period of time. Give her a hand, please.
So a little bit earlier, you heard our mayor saying, "We can't thank you enough and we can't pay you back, but what we can do is pay it forward, and that's for sure." Dr. Cheryl Sterling is also here in the audience, and she always does that when we choose on a call. Stand up and say hello. Keep standing, keep standing. Dr. Cheryl Sterling was also a part of the city council, I believe, when the new street naming came about. And it's most appreciated, and we're so happy to have you here on today, and God bless you, okay, on your new journey as well. But when I said we can't pay you back, but what we can do is keep paying it forward. This city council also, I don't remember what year it was, they made an ordinance where now developers cannot come into our city and name these street names any old thing. They must put forth a slate of what those street names will be, and they must be approved by the planning's on the commission. So we will continue to pay it forward. We're internally grateful for everything that you do. Thank you so much, sir, and thank y'all for leading that charge on changing our street names.
Thank you. I don't know if we want to get official with all of you in, but I think that the Gilbo's and the Pearson families should have an opportunity to say just a brief word because they took it upon themselves to go door to door, ask the neighbors, would you kindly sign this petition so that we can change the names of the streets? Now, one might think that this was something easily done, but it was not. It took a lot of time and a lot of energy, which means it took a lot of caring and a lot of concern. So I'd like to ask them to come over, and we'll start with Pearson. Give her a hand, please.
Good morning. I didn't know I was supposed to speak, but I do want to thank Congressman Al Green. It has been so important. I know for people who don't live on that street, it's been a stain for us ever since we bought that house. Not knowing what the street name meant until a year later, which was my fault. I said, there's no way we can stay on this street. Our children, they're not going to understand why we live in Nathan Bedford Forrest Drive. So it was important to us. We tried this before in the past, and we failed. But it was important to us. For me, waking up on that street, it was an insult to my ancestors who have died. So I wanted to, I can't rewrite history, but I can rename that street. I committed effort to rename that street. And I wanted to let you know ahead of domino effect, I have other streets coming down there. What did y'all do? We wanted to name ours. So I just wanted to thank, Rhonda came to me first. We've always wanted to do it, didn't know about what it means to go about doing it. When she came and talked to my husband, it lit a match. It was a lot of work trying to knock on, you know, you don't answer the door anyway. Nobody does. So my husband started, and if you know my husband, he's a bald-headed black man, and nobody opened the door. So he brought me, he said, I'm going to need you. So he brought me, and when he brought me, they started opening the door. So whatever it takes, we're in it, we got our street name, but we want to continue. We want to move this forward. Thank you so much.
Let's go over, we'll just take you next, please. Give her a hand, please.
Good morning. Thank you Congressman Al Green. And I definitely want to thank the mayor and the council members for the support. I just know, or my husband and I know, that when we moved on Confederate Drive, immediately we loved the neighborhood, but we really disliked the name. And I've always been taught that you speak things into existence. And so we kept speaking that we were going to someday change the street name. And we made it vocal, and we talked to our neighbors that lived on that street. And they said, when that day comes, you let us know what we need to do. And so our beloved council member, Lady Klausa, I asked her one day and said, "Man, you know, this is something that we want to do. What do we need to do?" She led me to Councilmember Boni, and that's when it all started to happen. No, it wasn't easy, but we knew that that was something we did not like to speak. I mumbled my address to my family, my friends when they asked where you live. It was embarrassing. I would go to the airport, and they would look TSA. You know, they would say, okay, let's see your driver's license. And they'd look up like, Confederate Drive? Yeah. So we knew that's what we wanted to do. We were assisted by Councilmember Boni. He told us what we need to do. We immediately, we immediately got that petition together, and my husband and I walked the streets and we got the petition signed. And I want to just say thank you again. It's like a cloud lifted off. It's nice now to look at our street signs, our neighbors. All of us are like, oh my goodness, Prosperity Drive. So we can't move. I'm going to just say that right now. We'll never move. So we are delighted, and again, like this Pearson said, this is like homage to our ancestors, you know, to say, look, we've done something that is positive. That means equity, inclusion for everybody. So with that being said, thank you once again, and I'll bring up my hand.
Hello, I'm going to take your mic, I'm saying. Well, you know, first of all, the reasons are just to... I know you guys must have been a little bit short of me up here, but... I want to say thank you, guys. Thank you Congressman Al Green. It has been an honor and a pleasure to watch your motivation as well as you guys. You know, when we came to the city that night to do our protests, we were the only ones there, and I was going to tell them, I said, you know, we were wasting our time. And you guys, you do what you did, the way you guys did your job, and honestly, honestly, help me out with the word. There you go. Holding on, it's great. So I want to thank you guys for your service. Matt, you've been an outstanding man. Appreciate it. No matter what we like, if you guys don't realize, you know, if you live on a street that has a negative name to it, it'll kind of make you have a negative attitude sometimes towards certain people, cultures, et cetera, because you don't really know that individual, how you feel, and that individual's shoes. So we can all want success and great things, but we all got to make sure we move in the same direction. We can't rewrite history, but we can start a new history for the kids behind us. So thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Just a quick pause. Do we have a news reporter here? So would you raise your hand? Or give him my hand, please. We have a news reporter here. Thank you. Thank you very much. We always like to let the news media know that we appreciate them, and I'd like to do that earlier, so I greatly appreciate it. And there are some who may be viewing this live streaming, and we thank you for what you may do upon doing this over the live stream. Well, now, I'm going to ask my staff with the camera to come over, please, so that we can get a quick picture, please, all right? And if Gilbo's, Gilbo over here, everybody out of the house, a little bit more. I'm going to come out with you. Do you look at that? We're going to start right here with Representative Reynolds, okay? Then we'll go to the next person. All right. Thank you again. All right, friends. All right, continuing, friends. We've got Representative Reynolds here. We wanted to get the mayor, we got another mayor. But Representative Reynolds has been involved with this community project funding. They call us many times before I will approve something, I ask that you get elected officials who are representing you from that area to approve it as well. So every time I approve something, I have the names of other persons who hold public trust and been elected, I have their signature on this document, whatever it happens to be that I'm approving. And Representative Reynolds has approved multiple, multiple projects in the Ninth Congressional District. The one that I'm looking for is the project concerning the homes, a building of a project. But Representative Reynolds, I'm going to ask if you come up, if you would, and we want to thank him for his approval. He probably wouldn't get the recognition he deserves because this thing would just completely fly under the radar if we didn't have a moment like this to thank him for putting his name on the line. Because every time we do this, we risk someone saying that this was a fraud or something didn't go right, and then risk our reputations being soiled and sullied in some way. Well, I appreciate him putting his name on the line with us. Give him a hand, please, Representative Reynolds.
Thank you Congressman Green. And I'm going to be extremely brief, but he thanked me, but honestly, we have to thank him. I want y'all to do me one, Missouri City Congressional District non-porter person privilege. Stand up and give this man right here a big round of applause for his tremendous, outstanding leadership. And, you know, one of the things you need to mention was that when they initially had the funding, the federal funding, they put to the Biden administration. And this is not an election issue, Congressman, but there were no Republicans that voted in favor of it. Congressman Green made sure that we had the resources to rebound during COVID. And because of that, a lot of y'all don't know that Missouri City was able to do a disparity study because of those federal funds that can help our minority and small businesses. So Congressman Green, even beyond the funding that you mentioned today, Fort Bend ISD received funding, Stafford Municipal School District received funding, Fort Bend County received funding. Y'all remember the We All Eat and the funding for daycare and food insecurity and many of those federal funds that the county used? That was because the Congress brought those funds to our community in addition to Stafford. So Congressman, you have done so much for us to remain viable, to be the fastest-growing county in the state, and your leadership has been exemplary. And I'll end by saying, Jeff, I remember, and I wish we had documented this stuff, many years before we were able to get the street name. Remember when Congressman Green to the old gentleman's house over there? Where were two veterans? Congressman Green started this many, he was like, we need to go, and we went to that man's house. And honestly, he was a little reluctant because no one had done it. And Congressman Green gave him security and let him know that we're going to stand by you. And thanks to his perseverance, many years later, we were able to bring it to fruition. So Congressman Green is steadfast. He has been a phenomenal leader, and we couldn't do it without local leadership as well. This is finally federal, state, and local. This is how we get things done. Thank you, Boni. Look for all of us. He never has a big ego with, hey, I'm up here, you guys down there. He's always so accessible, as Lance says, always calling, always doing everything he can to keep our community together. In addition to, after redistricting, have in Brazoria County and Harris County, he could be well by just staying in Houston. But he never neglects even the smallest portions of the Ninth Congressional District. And with that, thank you Congressman.
While we're in Missouri City, we have the mayor of Stafford with us and a city council person from Stafford, and we'll ask both of them to come up, please. Give Mayor Ken Matthews a big hand as he come forward, and give Councilwoman, former employee of the Ninth Congressional District, Alice Chin, a big hand as well, too. We are currently working on a project that did not come to fruition this year, but we have an agency, an entity, that wants to have a... that wants to have a really big housing fair, as it were. And we want to do this at the Stafford Center. I contacted, uh, the Councilwoman Chin, who contacted the mayor, and we're looking at a way to bring all of these resources to the Stafford Center so that people can have an opportunity to buy a home if your rent is paid timely. If you pay your light bill, your gas bill, your water bill. The statistical information indicates that you are likely to pay your mortgage if you pay these things timely. And there is a company that actually looks at these things to make some determination about your credit worthiness. So, I'm proud of what they're doing, this company. I won't single them out just yet and say the name. But I'm also proud that they were to bring this to Stafford, Texas, and we'll be inviting all of you to participate to be stupid, you so desire. So, at this time, uh, mayor, uh, the mayor is newly elected. For those who may not know, give him my hand, please. And I want you to know, for those who may not, that this, this country has a lot of problems. We got a lot of things that you've got to correct. But there are also some things that we can say that are very positive. And sometimes, uh, we can be guilty of never saying the positive things to the extent that it appears that we are negative. Always not so. But in this country, this man who was born in India is now the mayor of Stafford, Texas. Give him my hand, please, Congressman.
Thank you, Congressman. You made me emotional. Thank you so much. You know, while I am on the standing, I'm glad I, I, I am here. To correct the past mistakes, it takes time. But we should have the passion and persistence. Going forward, no matter how long it takes, we can get it done. We can correct the past mistakes. When we come together and make those people aware of these inhuman things. So, what I would say, let us be all together. It takes time, step by step, to correct the things. Even after ending slavery, these are the things going on. We probably, we did not notice it, but then we get attention. When they come to know, the person who came here and she noticed it, ah, my God, I will have to live on that street. It takes our persistence, our work, to correct the past mistakes, no matter how long it takes. Let us do it every time so that one day our future generation can enjoy the complete freedom. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Alice Chin, uh, I'm proud to tell you that Councilwoman Chin worked in the Ninth Congressional District office for many years, and she resigned her position in our office to work for city council. And she is the outstanding woman.
Thank you, Congressman. My name is Alice Chin. I was born in Taiwan. I was a graduate student in my scholarship, came to this country. Now, I'm a proud United States citizen. I have no good news to share all of you today. During our budget process, you know, budget meeting for the new year, FY twenty-three, twenty-four, we made the decision in council. June teen now is official Stanford City Holiday. Also, Martin Luther King also is our Stanford City Holiday. What a day! And we also, any confirmation, we have to have a funding, right? So, that, uh, my council member, Willie Bosick, motion this agenda. Who seconded this? Alice Chin seconded. I'm so proud. Two weeks ago, when I was in the city, city council meeting, budget meeting, we cannot answer any phone because every congressman called me. I pick up, anytime, just like Lynn, we, I pick the phone right away. But this time, I cannot pick because I was in a budget meeting. You know, budget meeting is so important for every city. I got a voicemail. There's one gen, one president candidate from Taiwan come all the way to Washington to visit. My Congressman Earl Green. And Congressman Green called me, but see, I cannot answer the phone. So Congressman say, here is your president conf, uh, candidate from Taiwan. He want to talk to you. Oh, okay, sorry. By anyway, maybe short. He left message saying, Alice, can you bring Congressman visit Taiwan in the future? What an honor, right? You all talk about Congressman do all these. I was so honored to work for him as his community liaison for twelve years. I want Congressman do everything for our country, for our community. You say, everybody say, thank you, Congressman. Congressman, you changed my life. You changed my life. Thank you for you to let me learn from you. And now, on the public servant, so I can do something for this community, for this country. Congressman, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll probably take another photo with all of the electors in just a moment, but I have one additional elected official who has helped us with these community project funds. And, uh, he has, uh, helped us with tens of millions of dollars. He has made the request, or he has either made it or supported a request. And, uh, these projects are not easily acquired. But when the name of a county commissioner is associated with the project, it gives it some added credence, some added credibility. And I'm proud to tell you that we have one such commissioner here today who has been a stalwart when it comes to helping the community to advance with their tax dollars from Washington DC. Because these are your tax dollars, no question about that. But he makes sure they are properly channeled into communities as well. So, I'm going to ask Commissioner Rodney Ellis, Commissioner from Precinct One in Harris County, to come over, too.
I'm all protocols observed. I want you to know, I know I'm not in Harris County. Mayor, Mayor Alacat and Councilmember Alice Chin and, um, um, the, the mayor of Stafford, I want you to know I represented Stafford at one point. And of course, my friend Congressman Bonney and my, my dear friend, Representative Ron Reynolds, I had the privilege of representing about seventy-five thousand people in Fort Bend County for twenty-six years in the Texas Southern. And Congressman, uh, you, you remember when I, when I first ran? I know the only reason I won that seat in District D was because that little part of Fort Bend County, not Missouri City, little part of Fort Bend County that was in District D put me over.
That's right.
And I have never forgotten it. I started early this morning. Alice, you know, he, he, he gave me a job, but I go way back with him. The first person I spoke to this morning was my wife. I said, good morning, and she said, get out. And then I, I, I went on to my desk and started tippin' around, doing a little work in the phone room. Congressman Green and I closed because neither one of us sleep. And I, I guess he, he's watching the unfortunate war breaking out in the Middle East. And so, he said, are you watching the TV? But he, he's just such a treasure. And Congressman, I don't say public, but I just really love you. And, um, you know, whatever the issue is, he's always there. You know, we've had some battles together. Representative Reynolds, you know, City of Houston's plan, Justice of the Peace Alexander Green was the head of the NAACP. And he and I were just kicking it up to force the city of Houston to have the MW, the Minority Women's Business Enterprise program they have now, which is one of the most successful in the country. We were a heck raisers. And then, when the mayor didn't give us what we thought it should have been, we made him do it. I saw this article somebody sent it, but I sent it to the Congressman, and it was basically calling about five percent when he took all the mumbo jumbo out. And, uh, Justice of the Peace Green just laid it out so clearly. He said, here are percentages of the population, blacks, Hispanics, women, South Asians, whatever it came to back then. You know, maybe about forty-five, forty percent of the population. And he said, I think it's only fair we get twenty percent as a goal, not a quota. Uh, but he is no stop, and I'm just so proud of him. Uh, the first person, uh, to, to voice his conscience on whether or not a president should be removed from office, which put his hand in there. I just want to tell you about, I'm not going to talk to all of you. I think we have this last event that we're going to go to. But I just don't want you to think that, um, I forgot about you since I don't have the privilege of representing you anymore. I will have a little sliver of Missouri City. That's in Harris County Councilmember. I'm aware of it, and he called all the time. One point two million people, but, you know, I hear from no seven thousand. More than I hear from the other, a one, a million hundred ninety thousand. But, uh, I thank the world for what you all do greatly, and I appreciate your worship here. And I appreciate you standing with this Congressman as well, so thank you.
Before they leave, I'd like to get one shot with all of the electors. So, if you'll just stand over to my, let all of the electors come back up, please. Like mayor, councilmembers, one shot before you. And, uh, as they're, as they're doing this, uh, I'm going to continue and tell you that, uh, we have other legislation that deals with indigenous discrimination as they align themselves. We have a, a resolution before Congress to have a Remembrance Day for the people who for two hundred and forty plus years gave America their lives. And slavery Remembrance Day, that is coming up. So, please be mindful of it. And we had a Remembrance Day this year, and it's always on August the twentieth. Next year, on August twentieth, there'll be a slavery Remembrance Day event. And we would cordially and kindly invite you to please be in attendance at the event. With that said, do not leave yet because I'm about to tell you about some billion dollar programs that we've dealt with that you'll be very much interested in. So, I'm going to slip over here and take this photograph. Now, friends, um, I want to, uh, mention a couple of pieces of legislation that we passed and one that's pending. Uh, was thought was the one that's pending. Uh, I believe that people should not be discriminated against when they're making an effort to further their lives and to better their circumstance by borrowing money. So, to this end, uh, we have, uh, introduced legislation in Congress that would penalize people for doing this, or discriminating against people in lending. Now, for those who might think that it doesn't happen, I assure you, we have the empirical evidence to support the fact that it does. And we do what's called testing from time to time in various some ways. And in so doing, we have found that when you send persons in of different hues, of different, um, ethnicities, if you will, different genders, we have persons who get discriminated against, but one person can't get the loan, and then someone comes right behind her who's less qualified and gets the loan. So, we, we have legislation to deal with this. And, uh, before I tell you what those penalties are, it's important that I tell you this, that these banks have written laws that favor them. Currently, if you attempt to defraud a bank and you're successful, you can be fined up to one million dollars, and you can be in prison for thirty years for defrauding the bank. But if the bank defrauds you, we don't have similar penalties. So, we now have legislation that would require banks to be fair, give you the loan that you deserve based upon your qualifications, not based upon how you look, and not deny you based upon how you may look. And failure to do so, and if it's proven in court, then the bank can be fined up to a hundred thousand dollars, and someone can get twenty years in prison for defrauding the customer of the bank. I think that's pretty big. Now, the banks don't always agree with me, but, uh, I think that we have to do what we believe to be right. And this is the Fair Living for All Act. It is HR one sixty-six, the Fair Living for All Act. One of the persons who has helped me with this and other aspects of my legislative agenda is here. Uh, and I'm going to ask him to stand. Eric, would you stand at this time, please? This is my legislative director. Give him my hand. You can always watch the missing seats, you know. All right. Now, let me tell you about a couple of other pieces of legislation that are important. And, uh, I will do so rather expeditiously. Uh, I want to talk to you about a piece of legislation that's a nine billion dollar piece of legislation that we passed for nine billion dollars. So far, we've been talking about billions and hundreds of millions. Now, we'll talk about the billions. This is the Emergency Capital Investment Program, the ECIP, Emergency Capital Investment Program. Uh, this was a part of HR one thirty-three, the Consolidated Appropriations Act. You don't have to remember all of these things. It occurred in December of twenty twenty, December twenty-seven. Uh, under this program, the Treasury will provide up to nine billion dollars directly to depository institutions that are certified community development financial institutions or minority depository institutions. Nine billion dollars. Uh, the Treasury will set aside two billion dollars for these CDFIs, these programs that are called community development financial institutions. Two billion dollars for them and for the MDIs, minority depository institutions. Banks that are fifty-one percent owned by minorities are called MDIs, minority depository institutions. So, there'll be two billion dollars set aside for them. Uh, also, within that legislation, there was an emergency capital investment program. And, uh, this program will have as much as eight point three billion dollars to invest in a hundred and seventy community development financial institutions and minority depository institutions. Uh, all of these numbers might seem huge to you, but they're important to us because these numbers indicate that there will be people who will get some help that they might not ordinarily get but for these institutions having the funds, the capital available to make loans such that they can do what others do. And that is have the opportunity to fulfill their lives with what we call the American dream. And next, another piece of legislation is the State Small Business Credit Initiative. The state, State Small Business Credit Initiative. Uh, we sponsored legislation that would fund this for ten billion dollars. Ten billion dollars. And this is to help small businesses. States provide these CDFIs, these community development financial institutions, and these small business, uh, credit initiatives. They, they fund these. The part of the CDFIs are funded through the State Small Business Credit Initiative. And this is a capital program that allows for funds, but also for technical assistance to be provided. Uh, this is very important, and, uh, my hope is that these things will eventually get known foreign wide so that people will hear from them without mine having to come out and tell you about them. But the funds don't come to the congressional office. None of these funds will come to the congressional office. The funds go to various other agencies. One of the things that we do in Congress is we send it, but it is always up to others to spend it. We spend none of these dollars. We send them to other agencies that spend them or to some institution, some NGO that will spend it. And in this case, the state of Texas receives money, and the state of Texas then finds ways to make sure that the money is accorded to people who are deserving of it. There is, uh, another program that I'll call to your attention, and that is... There is uh another program that I'll call to your attention, and that is the Minority Business Resiliency Act, that's the act, and then there's a Minority Resiliency, Minority Business Development Agency that emanates from this act, and this agency will help businesses that are fifty-one percent owned by one of more socially disadvantaged individuals. Uh, this is something that we have for years wanted to get accomplished, it has been done, and the bill that we passed authorized a hundred and ten million dollars per year in appropriations for this agency, and this is from twenty twenty-one till twenty twenty-five. Uh, so far, we have had appropriated fifty-five million dollars and an additional seventy million dollars. Once you authorize something, then you have to, over the years, get the funds appropriated for what you have already authorized. In Congress, there's a two-step process for monies to make it to the masses in the form of various loans and grants and other ways as well, but there's a two-step process. The first process is an authorization. I sit on the Financial Services Committee, and we authorize money to be spent, but that does not mean that the money's going to be spent because we decided that a certain amount would be authorized. Uh, then there are appropriators, the appropriators take the authorizations and they then appropriate the funds for what has been authorized, so it's a two-step process, one group of folk will authorize and the other will appropriate, and sometimes the appropriators don't always appropriate as authorized, or as quickly as authorized, and sometimes we have to do this repeatedly, year after year after year, but we plan to do what we can to make sure that what we authorize uh does get appropriated. Finally, I want to mention to you, you probably noticed that I spend a lot of my time dealing with what I call indigenous discrimination, that is harmful discrimination, and in so doing, one of the things that I recognize, and I have other colleagues who recognize it as well, is that on many of the committees, uh we have persons to appear before us who are witnesses on these panels, and we ask questions of them, and they afford us the intelligence that we need to hopefully make intelligent decisions. Well, many of these panels will have persons who are of but one race, they're not diverse, they will have only men, they don't have diversity when it comes to sexuality, so we have decided that we would make an effort to do something about this. And by the way, we're talking about people who are capable, competent, and qualified. We're not asking that you put someone on because of how they look, what we're asking is that you not keep people off because of how they look, and to do that, you have to raise your voice, you have to move your voice. So we've raised our voice, and when we have uh a panel that consists of all white males, we protest, we protest, this is not to demean white men, but it is to say, and by the way, in protesting, I ask those men, are there women that you know of who can do what you're doing? And they say yes, and we ask of them people of color who can do what you're doing, and they say yes. So at some point, you have to have someone, it happens to be me now, there'll be another who will follow, but it happens to be me to, to say, let's have diversity, let's, let's let women give testimony, let's let little girls see them testifying before Congress, let's let people of color testify before Congress, let's let everybody be seen as making a contribution, that's what this is all about, so we protest. We want to give everybody the opportunity to make a contribution, and it's making a difference, because we're seeing more diversity among these committees. Remember, we're talking about people who are capable, competent, and qualified, and we've worked hard to get our degrees, we've worked hard to get uh our credibility, now we want that recognized the same way we have traditionally recognized white men. Don't be insulted if I'm saying this, I was a litigator, I remember when we had one-race juries in this country, I would go into a courtroom where the judge, the jury, the prosecutor, the court reporter, the bailiff were all white, all of them, I, I litigated in that environment, thank God for a Supreme Court that ruled that that was inappropriate, that there are other people who can serve on juries too, there are other people who can be judges, there are other people who can be court reporters, so as a result, we no longer have one-race juries in this country. I brought that from the courtroom to the Congress of the United States of America. I don't think we should have one-race panels of witnesses, which is why I called it to the attention of the Congress, and we are seeing change, it's not happening as quickly as I would like, with capable, competent, and qualified people, but it is happening. So I'm grateful to those who have assisted with this endeavor, the Honorable Maxine Warris, who chairs the committee, and the Honorable Joyce Lady, who chairs one of the subcommittees, we have sent a letter to the chairperson of the committee this year, that's the McHenry whom I spoke of earlier, and uh we are getting results. So those are some of the things that I wanted to share with you, when you've done a lot, it's impossible to share it all in one town meeting, but I have shared some of the things that I believe to be important with you, and I'm sure that there are many other things that you would have me discuss and talk about, there are many things that you could ask me about that I would not be prepared to answer, so if you have a gotcha question, you got me already, okay? I don't want you to feel as though you can't get me because I, I know everything, because I don't, there's just too much happening in Congress for me to know everything that's going on, but I have shared with you this, that we are fighting to make sure that we help those who have been among the least, the last, and have lost, those who've been locked out of the system, and help them have access. We are also fighting to make sure that the municipalities that we represent are getting an opportunity to receive your tax dollars returned to you in the form of uh community project funding. We are also fighting to make sure that if you go into a bank to get a loan, that you're not going to be discriminated against, and we are going to continue to fight to make sure that all people, regardless of how you look, how you dress, that you're treated fairly when it comes to the appropriation and allocation of tax dollars. Those dollars don't go to people because of how they look, and they should not be denied people because of how they look. I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. To begin with, the fun begins, uh if you have a question, I'd like for you to please raise your hand, okay, all right, this will, okay, there's number one, all right, we're just starting on this side of the room, go to, I do have that as number one, give number two, please, okay, all right, give out number three, please, okay, uh give that gentleman who's standing, go on down, please, okay, continue, please, continue, continue handing them out to people with their hands up, continue handing them out to people with their hands up, please. Uh, Robert, if you do this, if we can, we can take some of those numbers so that you can hand some out to, please, let me sure everybody gets a number, which is possible. Okay, uh what was the highest number handed out, please?
Seventeen is the last one I'm about to hand out.
You're saying seven?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, you have one, you're getting eight.
I may have to leave.
Eighteen, did anyone else?
Okay, thank you, all right, thank you very much, thank you. Okay, all right, now here's what we will do, uh we will take the lowest, a low number, which will be number one, and then the highest number will be next, as a matter of fact, we'll reverse it, we're gonna take the highest number first and then the lowest number, and we'll take low, high, low, high, low, high, until we go through the numbers, that way, persons who have to be seated over here, uh just by virtue of consequence of coming in and the seat being available, you will not be denied the opportunity to ask a question. So, we'll start with number, the highest number, which is what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, who has number eighteen? Okay, all right, number eighteen, okay, uh your question, please?
Um, my question has to do with, I, I appreciate, I, I try to protect my voice, but I'm not sure.
Well, I'm gonna repeat the question, I'm gonna repeat it.
I appreciate that uh you want to work, we're working with the local level and the state level, I'm going one board level, and that's municipal utility district, uh Corbin County has an abundant amount of municipal utility districts, I represent one, a president of my mother's district, we're not even connected to a local city, you know, as an U C J, and so when we have concerns, and you know, I work with the water, wastewater treatment, I've been paying close attention to uh what's going on in Washington D.C., with money's coming down to help us with our water and wastewater treatment and what happens, what, where do you suggest we go? Uh, I have some ideas of how we could uh perhaps, work with, work with your office uh as mud district operators, we're not tied to cities, but where do you right now think that we can go, and we're looking for some of those funds? I've, I've looked at funds before to bring to our area, but where do you suggest that we go, and we're looking for funds, and we're not tied to any uh cities or U C Js, we tried with Missouri City and they turned us down, so where do you suggest we go?
Let me, let me recommend that if you have a project that you would like to have funded, that you first produce it in writing, and then bring that to our office, and we'll see if we can help you, if your project is in the ninth congressional district, and if it's, if it's not, then you can go to the congressperson that, whose district you're in. Okay, so you're in the ninth congressional district, then you can bring it to our office, we don't guarantee anyone that your project will be funded, but we do guarantee the opportunity to present to us for our consideration. All right, thank you very much. Okay, let's now go to number one, that was, all right, number one, please, and.
Thank you, my question is, how can I set an appointment with your office to come in and talk to my man who's at the hotel, um, Fairland, that man, who told us about the grant right, so I want to make an appointment with your grant right, is what I'm interested in.
Okay, you can come to our office, and we ask that people give us things in writing, and if you'll come to our office, you can give it to us in writing, and we'll give it our consideration, we can't make any guarantees, all right, so we will, if you'll come to me. Well, you, well, you can just come, and then you'll probably have to make an appointment, but if you call the office, you can make an appointment, this lady who's standing right next to you is a district director, she'll give you a card, and you can make an appointment, of course, we'll, we'll be honored to receive you uh by we've been appointed. Okay, uh that's uh number one and number eighteen, so now number seventeen, where is number, I assumed that seventeen would be over here, seventeen is over there, all right, my best efforts, sometimes don't work out, okay, uh sir, what is your question? About giving immigration? Immigration?
Uh, I realize a lot of people do that every day, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about people who had gone through the process, filed application for visa fees, and now are waiting for interviews at several different empires, sometimes for years, maybe almost two years, uh and so I'm asking you, what is that your point of taking the president's position to minimize the family separation?
Well, here's what we can do for persons who are trying to lawfully enter the country, uh if you'll come to our office, you can complete something called a privacy release form, and then we'll make an inquiry about why is it taking so long in your particular case. Uh, we don't control immigration, that is a function of the executive branch of the government, but we can make an inquiry, and there are people who are literally waiting for more than ten years, uh so this is not something new to us, uh there's a long line of people who are trying to get into the country, and uh if you'll come by the office and complete a privacy release form, if you live in our congressional district, we'll make an inquiry, that's what we do, we make an inquiry, we can't tell them, you must let this person in, or you must keep this person out, we have no such authority, but we can make inquiries as to why those persons who do have the authority, why they have delayed, or why they have not made a decision that you find to be acceptable to do. Thank you very much, okay, all right, that was number seventeen, so now we will go to number two, where is number two? All right, okay, your question, please?
All right, Congressman, number one, as I wanted to thank you very much, I was on the Missouri City Bond Committee and the Moving Forward to Get the Freedom Tree, and I wanted to thank you, everybody here wants to thank you for getting that easement and helping us to get things moving, but that's, that's just a thank. Secondly, most importantly, we pray in well, holy land today, and I'm just wondering, since McCall's district touches the greater Houston lands, have you spoken to him to see what the G O P side is doing to help bring peace and stability, because people in Palestine live in a sweat, they live in apartheid, that, I don't care what anyone says, it can't stand, it doesn't last, so I'm just curious of what you've been talking to your colleagues this morning?
The colleagues that I talked to, and I have talked to several this morning, uh Mr. McCall is not one of them that I talked to this morning, but that's, I, I hope you don't take that the wrong way, I, I, I just did talk to him this morning, and he and I don't talk regularly, to be quite honest with you, uh so uh, uh but I did talk to several colleagues, and um I, I don't discuss or give out my, the conversations, I don't talk to other people about them, because my colleagues will cease to talk to me if I tell you what I think a colleague said, and I may give you the wrong interpretation, so I, I never do that, uh but there are opinions about what's happening that vary from what you said to opinions that are completely antithetical to what you said, the opinions vary, and uh in this country, everybody's entitled to have an opinion, and everybody's entitled to have a voice, some voices are louder than others, but we're all entitled to our opinions. All right, that was number two, and I've gone through seventeen, so that means that I'm at sixteen now, where is sixteen? Okay, sixteen. Speak loudly if you can, please.
Good morning, Councilman Albrecht.
Yes, sir.
I, um, first of all, congratulate you for passing the Remembrance of Slavery Day, all the guys, very talented, and it's very important, because we have to remember our past, African Americans, Indian African Americans, President-elect, remember that, but to make certain that we understand the purpose of slavery, that only prevents us raising our history, but it allows us as a unit of people of color, cultural diversity, to afford and benefit from growing and experience that some of us had, and now others can share, to change the mainstream that was fair to be had in charge of that, another thing, I'm in health care, and so my focus now is on, my question to you is, if they are funding, particularly Texas now, those of you who don't know, Texas is the largest state, but it also has the largest population of uninsured health, uh, health, uh, person, we can do something about that, so I, uh, my question is, if they are funding for federally qualified health clinics in Texas, which is unseriably.
Yes, sir, the F Q H C is the federally qualified health clinics, do receive federal funding. Do we see federal funding? And, um, if your clinic is in our district, and if you're seeking funding, one of the things that we can do is write letters of support. But we write letters of support after we've had an opportunity to get a better understanding of what you're doing. So if you're interested in something like this, uh, you can contact our office, and we'll visit with you about it. By the way, everybody that I'm talking to, I, I may not be the person you visit with personally. It's just so that you'll know, we have staff to help us. If I had tried to visit with every person personally, I assure you, I would never get to Washington DC to cast votes. So I, I, I have to go to Washington, I work there, and then I'm here usually a few days, but a lot more days in Washington DC, so you can do this. But there's also something more to be said about this. The federal government offered the state of Texas when we were going through what was called Obamacare, more properly known as the Affordable Care Act. The federal government appropriated a hundred billion dollars for Texas. I did not say a hundred million, billion with a B. A hundred billion dollars to help poor people with Medicaid. One hundred billion dollars, and the state of Texas turned it down. The state of Texas, in my opinion, has not done what it should and could do to help poor people who need help to assist. And by the way, those people come in all stripes.
That's right.
They do. My hope is that there will be a change of heart at the executive level in the state of Texas. You, you're right about the most in the country, right here in the state of Texas, the most. And, um, it's not because your tax dollars are not available to you. It's because your leadership, our leadership, my leadership, I love my state. So I'm not, I'm not putting it down because I don't like it, I love my state. And I will do all that I can to help, but I have to be truthful about it. That's the problem with it. Okay, now you were number what, sir?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, so that means that I'm going to number three now?
Yes.
Okay, number three.
Hello, Judge Green, my name is Karen Elberton. I served on your board at N double A C P in Houston many years ago. My question is about loan forgiveness. I heard on news yesterday that a hundred and twenty-five thousand loan forgiveness had been approved through the present administration. The Supreme Court had struck down as far as any accommodation or consideration of loan forgiveness. My question for you is that at this point, how do you see that particular effort moving forward to help students that have unbelievable loan debts and cannot move forward as far as their own economic?
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, for those who may not have heard who are over in this corner, it has to do with debt forgiveness, persons who have student loans, and, uh, who, a good many of them can pay them back, and a good many of them cannot do. Uh, so the question has to do with what can be done about loan forgiveness. I happen to be a person who believes that in the richest country in the world, we ought to be able to afford the same type of education that we provide for grades one through twelve. We should be able to provide that similarly for persons for at least two years of college. At least two years of college, it should be provided at that same, in the same fashion. And I happen to believe, be a person who believes that we can forgive loans that have been made. Now, the argument against it, I want to make sure that I place this argument before you, because the argument against it is, some people have played by the rules. They have received their loans, and they are paying them back, and somehow paid them back. So it's unfair to them to now decide that some people will be given the opportunity to have their loans forgiven, while others have to repay their loans. Uh, I, I understand that argument, but I also understand that while I want life to be fair, it isn't always fair, and I'm not talking about the people who, who have paid the loans, it's just not fair to them. Life isn't fair to everybody who gets the money such that they can have a job to pay the loan back. There are a lot of people who are treated unfairly when it comes to getting a job and repaying a loan. So I hope that we can get to a point in this country where the education that we all value will be available to all persons regardless as to where you're born, whether, and if you're born in some zip codes, it's prognosticated that you probably won't finish high school. Or you won't, you'll never be a millionaire if you come from that zip code. Well, I want people to have an equal opportunity regardless as to where you're born, regardless of how you look, regardless of your gender. I want equal opportunities for all, where people can succeed on their merits or fail on their demerits. But that education is pretty fundamental to acquiring this opportunity, I know. But for my education, I would not be standing before you right now as a member of Congress. And I'm grateful to the many people who helped me along the way. Uh, I'm not here because of my brilliance, I'm here because I did get the education and an opportunity to become available that I have built myself. So I believe that we should help. Uh, the President did all that he could, he can't do anymore, in my opinion. If he does, he can be challenged in court. And as you know, the loans, uh, have to, the repayment process is starting up, people to repay. So I, I wish I could tell you that I have a solution for you. But if Congress won't pass a law that allows it, it won't be done. And before you can get an act of Congress, you have to have a Congress willing to act. You can't do it without a Congress willing to act. My hope is that if Congress is willing to act, I'll be one of it. Um, I, I have made that, that pledge to support people who have the education. Some didn't get an education but got the loans, but they still have to be repaid. So let's try to help as many as we can so that they can purchase homes and get on with their lives. Okay, uh, that was number three, so now we were at seventeen, so where's sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Fifteen, uh, yes, sir.
Hi, uh, you're recognized as someone who corrects wrongs and corrects injustices, and I applaud you for that. And I wanted to recognize you for supporting the Social Security Fairness Act as a co-sponsor. It affects all of these police officers who are paying into Social Security. But when it comes time for them to collect on their Social Security, it's going to be greatly reduced. And that goes for teachers and for firefighters and other people like myself. I, I was a veteran, and I paid Social Security. I'm now collecting Social Security, but it's greatly reduced. This act that you're co-sponsoring corrects that injustice, and that's what this man's all about. Applaud him for that. Is that you say it takes Congress to move. I'm asking you to help move the Congress, that we're going to get a new Speaker, speak with him, get him to move this bill. We've already got almost three hundred co-sponsors. It's enough to get this bill to the floor. We need to get it to the floor, we need to get it passed. If you can speak to some of the people on the other side of the aisle in our area who are not co-sponsors, to get them to co-sponsor it, and then vote for the bill when it comes to the floor. I applaud you for all you've done, and I appreciate it, and I'm sorry, but we continue to ask more. Get these bills to the floor, get them voted on, and, and let's have a government that functions for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. I quite frankly do not understand why this problem has persisted as long as it has. And it really makes no sense for this problem to persist as long as it has. Uh, you have stated the issues very eloquently. Uh, I can't add anything more other than I am going to do all that I can to help get this legislation through Congress. But here's something that you might remember as a result of what the gentleman has said. You can have enough votes in Congress to pass legislation, but if the Speaker of the House doesn't let it come to the floor for a vote, it will never pass in Congress. If you can't vote on it, it can't pass. So the, the name of the, the person who becomes Speaker of the House is pretty important. It really is. People might think that it doesn't impact me, yes, it does. The person who's Speaker of the House of Representatives. So, uh, while I appreciate you're giving me some additional responsibility to get something passed that I've already signed on to, that I voted for, that I support, and, uh, I, I quite frankly, I don't understand why this problem is, is still persisting. It just makes no sense for us not to, for us to, for us to say to people, you can't have what you worked for, and you, you've put it into a place where other people who do this will get theirs where you won't. And that just makes no sense to me. So I appreciate what you've done, but now I'm going to have to ask you to kind of help me out, okay? It's all right for you to go to other town meetings and raise your voice with someone who may not be supporting it. Uh, I have found that we who support things get a lot of requests to, to do an even better job of supporting what we're supporting. But I thank you, you were, you were very kind, thank you very much. Okay, give her a hand, please. Okay, you, you were number, okay, where are we on now?
Four.
Four, okay. Will somebody come over and kind of keep track of this for me? You're number four, okay? Okay, well, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were on my staff.
She is today.
I look to staffers for this kind of help.
She is today.
Okay, number four, yes, sir.
Before I came here this morning, I was on the phone with my sister who was in northern Israel, about to drive to her home in central Israel. So the news of the day doesn't just impact me, theoretically, it impacts me personally. The fact that we can make change, the fact that the people in Missouri City could change the name of their streets is impressive, not just because of the change that they made, but the fact that they made change, that they stepped up and were able to advance government in a positive way. I have been meeting with people of all different faiths, and we have been meaning to try to figure out ways that people of all ethnicities, all ages, all backgrounds can learn to live with one another in peace here in southeast Texas. I am wondering if we can get your support for, maybe through the community project funding, maybe with no funding at all, where we can bring people together like we have here in this room today, where we can learn to work with one another despite our differences, Muslim, Jew, Christian, doesn't matter what one's religion is. If we can show people that we can work together and perhaps export that to the rest of the world. Can we have your support for such a project?
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I, um, I think my history would indicate that I support the philosophy that you've just articulated. Uh, I'm very much, uh, of the opinion that people, regardless of their hues, regardless of their ethnicities, their genders, that people should be able to work together. I think Dr. Kane may have said it best when he reminded us that "Pecies, vales, and black complexion cannot forfeit nature's claim. For skin may differ, affection, whether it's in black and white, the same. And were I so tall as to reach the pole, or to grasp the ocean out of span, I must be measured by my soul, or the mind is the standard of the man, or woman, I might add." So I just think that we should, uh, we should make this effort, and I'm making the effort every day. Uh, I think that if you're suggesting that I become the leader of a crusade, I will tell you that when I deal with issues of war and peace on a daily basis, when I deal with issues of housing, issues of infrastructure for the country, uh, I have a plate that's fairly full. And I will be a person who supports what you're doing, but I cannot take all the challenge of leading this national movement that I think is worthy, worthy of being led by someone, perhaps such as yourself. But if not you, perhaps someone else. Uh, but I will tell you that just dealing with all that we have to do in Congress is a full-time job that takes me well into the evenings. Uh, it is not unusual for me to have five or more meetings like this on a given day. Today, I, I think I have about three or four more that I have to attend, three or four more that I have to attend. We carved this time out, but I still have more meetings, so. I, I, I would not want to make a commitment like that for you because I know that I wouldn't be able to keep it in terms of being a leader, but I am going to be a follower of that philosophy. And I thank you for calling that philosophy to our attention. Thank you very much. Give her a hand with that philosophy. All right, now what number am I on now? Number fourteen.
Uh, thank you for convening this con, this meeting, Congressman. And it is admirable because a lot of your colleagues have been using, you know, the climate since January sixth to kind of hide from their constituents, and so it's good that you come out and let us get to know you better every, every time. Um, I want to point to this chaos that's been unleashed around the, um, sacking of Kevin McCarthy as Speaker, and the bizarre way it happened, where you had, uh, nine Republicans led by Matt Gaetz, and then the entirety of the Democrats, and so it's a very strange combination of events that occurred. But there was a certain, I think, hidden blessing in all of it in that until things are rolling again up there, it gave pause to an, uh, a, 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 a plan to put another twenty-four billion dollars worth of weapons over to Ukraine. Um, and then it was reduced to six, but now everything is on hold until this stuff is worked out, unless there's some extra parliamentary way they do an end run around the budget process and ship them anyway, which I think President Biden was hinting at. Um, but, you know, in this context, something happened to give us a, a sense of who are, who are we arming? When President Zelensky, after he was refused speaking rights in Congress, went up to Ottawa, you know, and received a standing ovation with a Nazi, you know, a fascist, named Jaroslav Honka, um, who was giving a standing ovation by Prime Minister Trudeau, a ninety-two-year-old man who was an ally of Hitler, white supremacist, every bit. And the, the, and, and the question is, uh, is this, you know, is this the, the central cadre of what we're arming in Ukraine? Because the plans to crush Russia were enunciated by the think tanks and Hoover Institute long before, uh, Mr. Putin responded, uh, to, and moved into Ukraine. And so what I say, sir, is that we got to take this moment to pause and reject the idea that peace can come from more weapons, and look to Jesus Christ, you know, blessed are the peacemakers, you know? We have to find a negotiated settlement to end this thing and move forward, including with the interests of the people of Ukraine at heart. Now, there's more in my heart, but I'll leave it at that right now, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your commentary. Uh, and I can but only say that, uh, I, I respect your opinion. And I thank you very much for voicing it, that's what this town holds in form, so that we can all express our opinion. When it comes to making peace, uh, I believe that we should, if we can, if we can, I believe that we should. I'm sure that Congressman Cuellar wanted to make peace, and they pulled those guns on him just recently, and he had to surrender his automobile. I don't know whether you're aware of it or not, Congressman Cuellar was hijacked.
I heard about that, yeah. I used to live in Washington, you know, I grew up there, yeah.
But, uh, here's what I'm saying to you. When I was a younger man, I just celebrated my twenty-fifth birthday for the third time. When I was a younger man, I thought that if we would leave the world alone, the world would leave us alone. That's what I thought. I have learned since. I have learned since that this is not true. And I regret to even say it, but it's just not the case. One of the reasons that we have our large chess all around the world is so that we can have influence, and hopefully do what you've said, sir, and use that influence to make a difference. I, when I was a younger person, I thought that we should not have our large chess outside of the borders of the United States. But I now understand that there's a need to have influence, and if you want influence, you're gonna have to participate. And one of the ways you can participate is to help other people in times of need. So my point to you is, all of you, is this, I don't want any war anywhere, I really do not. But there are times when you have to defend yourself, there are times when you cannot allow aggression to permeate, because it can continue to germinate, and as a result, it can have an impact on you. I don't know the ins and outs of these wars, but I do know that I consistently said that I want peace, and I hope that we'll have peace in my lifetime. It would be a great thing to see a world without war in my lifetime. Probably since I had been born, there has not been a time when there wasn't some conflict somewhere in the world. Wouldn't it be wonderful to, in your lifetime, have at least one day when there is no conflict, no war, anyplace on the planet? That's the thing that I think the gentleman said I was talking about earlier, so I'm sure of that. Hopefully, we will achieve it. But that said, let me go to the next person. Number five. Yes, sir.
Congressman, thank you very much for hosting this town hall meeting and getting some back-and-forth feedback, rather than a 30-second television bite. You talked about community development. I'm old enough, when I got my degree in government, remember 50 years ago, I was more familiar with the term earmarks. It opened up a question in the back of my mind, do all congresspeople get the same amount of largeness of our tax dollars to share back more directly? You know us better than somebody from Iowa, and I'm just curious how that works. And thank you again for hosting this meeting.
Well, thank you. That's a very good question, and I'm proud to tell you that, proud to tell you the truth, no, we all do not. And here's how it works, generally speaking. The party that has 218 votes has first the speakership. That's pretty important, because you control the flow of legislation through the Congress. So you got the speakership. You also get the big office, the biggest office. You just heard recently about one person being moved out and another person being moved in. You also get, the people in leadership have planes. You get the best plane, you get the best offices, you get the best planes, you get the best parking spaces. And you also get to decide that you can have a little bit more for the people in your party than the party that's not possessive of 218 votes in Congress. So the party that's in, meaning the party that has 218 votes, will have more money for their members than the party that's out, that has less than 218 votes. And it may be close, but there is an imbalance. But what we do is, take whatever we have, and we try to use it as efficacious as possible. And I'm proud of what we've done so far, and I trust that we will maintain this process. But I assure you, you need to raise your voices and let it be known that you do appreciate the process, because there are some people who believe that this process is something that we can eliminate, and that savings is going to benefit us in great ways. But what you said is eminently correct. If you don't have this process, you have to go to Washington DC and lobby someone in Washington DC to get your project funded. You can lobby me, of course, and I'll lobby on your behalf, but we have to go to an agency that will have those funds associated with it and can be appropriated for you in a later time. It's a lot easier to get it done through a congressperson than it is through, say, the education agency or some other agency of Congress, okay? Thank you for the question, and I assure you that things, even if they flow, there'll be a time when perhaps I'll have an opportunity to do even more, if this comes through. Okay, what number am I on? Number thirteen.
Hi. Hi, Representative Green. It's been a long time since I spoke, spoken to you. I used to be the secretary of, well, the treasurer for the Sharp Town Democrats a number of years ago, and at one time, we met with you and we asked you to sponsor a bill to revive Glass-Steagall rules of banking, to separate back the commercial banks from the investment banks, so that the FDIC only ensures the commercial banks, the banks that follow the rules and the regulations, and not the banks that gamble on derivatives. And right now, we're facing a $2 quadrillion in derivatives that are unregulated, and that's a situation that could become a systemic banking crash, and also a dollar crash compounded with the fact that other countries are looking to avoid that crash falling on their heads, like the BRICS countries, and they formed a trade bloc, and now there's 11 of them, and they're big countries, Brazil, Russia, India, China, and South Africa, and I believe Iran, no, not Iran, Saudi Arabia, and the United Arab Emirates, Ethiopia, Egypt, and Argentina. And then there's about 40, you know, between 30 and 40 more nations that have applied for membership in the BRICS, because the BRICS has a bank. And the BRICS bank will be loaning long-term low-interest credit for infrastructure projects to the member nations. And this is the kind of thing that I always wanted to do all my life, is for the United States, to help develop the developing countries, and allow them to come up in their living standards with advanced technology, having sanitation systems, healthcare systems, education, the whole nine yards. And there's no reason why physically, all right, we can't do that, except that we have a financial system which is going bankrupt. Would you take us, would you at least co-sponsor House Resolution 2714, which is, was introduced by Marcy Caper, Democrat from Ohio? It's called the Return to the Prudent Banking Act. And this would be the first step for the United States to be able to protect itself so that the FDIC doesn't go bankrupt trying to bail out all of Wall Street and the city of London. But we have the people here in the United States with their savings in the bank, right? And that money's being loaned out, you know, to help Joe Schmo get a job or something. Sorry, Joe. Joe Sixpack. So would you please kindly take a stand to co-sponsor the 2714 and begin to look at what these BRICS countries are doing, because I think the US should recognize them, and begin to cooperate with them instead of seeing them as a threat?
Aaron, would you please make a note of it? Aaron, he's my legislative director, he's made a note of it. And I can tell you this, that I'm very sympathetic with what you've said about Glass-Steagall. For those who don't know, the name Glass-Steagall, these are proper nouns, and they're the names of people who sponsors some legislation. And there was a firewall that we had between commercial banking and investment banking, and unfortunately, we have not maintained that firewall to the extent of argument that I think it would be appropriate. So I'll take a look at it. I can't, until we look at something, I can't give you a commitment, but I will take a look at it. And I can tell you that in principle, I agree with what you said. Okay?
Phil Graham tore down the firewall.
Number?
Let's go, babe.
Number six.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I want to affirm the professionalism. It's my second time watching you. The first time was in Houston. Slave members there. I'm concerned about slave mentality, because slave mentality is more pernicious than physical slavery. It merely changed the chain from physical body to the heart. The area I'm concerned is the marginalization of African traditional religion in a globalized religious space. Do we believe that Africans, we don't know God before they, you know? Okay, let me put it this way. Why can't African traditional religion be one of the organized religions of the world? I don't know what we are doing or what we can do to bring our religion, that people can study it and know what it's all about. Then the second thing is that our youth empowerment, due to the slave mentality, our youths are going too fast in the wrong direction. If you come to, you know, construction, you finally, you know, see our blacks in missionary job and things like that. The ambition is, are they funding for youth empowerment through life-supporting skills that will make even a medical doctor to know how to take care of his vehicle a little bit? I don't know if there are funding that can help the youths empower them and give them life-supporting skills that will help them be future. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. As you know, the government cannot promote a given religion in this country. In some countries, the government is a part of the religious order, but in this country, we cannot promote a given religion. Sometimes it happens, but in my opinion, it shouldn't happen, because they're just, we have a lot of religions, a lot of different religions, and I don't know that I should decide which one is best for someone, or which one should be read and studied by someone. I'm the grandson of a preacher. I have my religious preference, but I don't know that I should try to impose that on other people. So there are, therein lies the problem with my getting involved with it. I just can't do that in good faith as a member of Congress. But you can, because you're a person of the cloth, and I want to thank you again for the indication this was. Thank you very much. Number 12, please.
Hello, Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
Came over from Pearland, Texas, this morning to ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
And you started off the meeting talking about what a troubled spot we're in without having a Speaker of the House. We can do no business in Congress. Congress is shut down. We can't make any rules, we can't make any regulations, we can't even declare war. And my question, you're my representative. My question is, sir, why did you vote for that to happen?
Well, thank you very much. I'll answer your question. If you have a person who has consistently, I'm trying to be very polite, who has consistently said, I'll do one thing and does another, and you're of the opinion that you can't trust this person, it's not a question of whether you are voting against the person. The question is this, should you vote to keep a person in a position that you believe to be untrustworthy? That's the question. Do you wanna give your seal of approval to this person? Do you want people to, after the vote is over, to say, you voted to keep the person in who did not keep his word on some things that were very important to us? So I voted to allow what I did not bring to the floor, but I was put in a position where I either had to approve of the person or disapprove. I disapproved of the person's behavior, not the person as an individual, I happen to like Mr. McCarthy, but his behavior in terms of how he negotiated was just unacceptable, as it relates to me. Now, I'm glad you brought it up, because it gives me a chance to explain this process. The people who brought this to the attention of the Congress were persons who were disenchanted and happened to be a part of the party that Mr. McCarthy is a part of, they're in the same party. If we had, or I had voted present, and all of the people who happened to be on my side of the aisle had voted present, he would have remained in office, which means that I would have sanctioned his remaining in office. If I had voted no, it would have sanctioned his remaining in office. So if I differed with him in terms of his behavior, the way to express that difference was to vote the way I voted. I did. I would hope that this would send a message to others that if given the opportunity, if you're not a person who keeps your word that we can rely on, that we're going to not support you. That's the essence of my story. Now, let me go on to say this, because it's important. My hope is that this won't become an issue again. That's my hope. But I want you to know this, this is not one of the things that I made an issue of. I was put in a position where I had to make a choice, but I didn't make it an issue, and didn't have any intentions of making it an issue. But I'm put in a position where I had to make a choice. I could not say I approve of the behavior of the person in office. By the way, a lot of people on his side of the aisle didn't approve his behavior. There were some of them who were willing to just set it aside for a moment, but there were lots that didn't approve. And thank you for the question. All right, number seven. Number seven has left the, left the building, okay? Number eleven, seven and eleven together, okay? Where's eleven? Yes?
Thank you for having me at town hall. I was just on a town hall meeting with a representative from AARP in DC, who is, I'm an AARP volunteer, and we got with advocacy group that we communicate.
Can you speak just a bit longer, please?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. My question, I had two-part question. The first part of the question is, if you live in A-League, who represents A-League?
Well, I think we still have a sliver. We used to have most of A-League, but we don't anymore. The Jared Manberry that took place, actually, well, removed A-League from the United Congressional District for the most part, that I believe that it's going to be Ms. Fletcher. Ms. Fletcher for the most, but there's some, there's a sliver of it that we have, and there may be some of it that may be in some other congressional district as well. So all A-League is not wholly contained in one congressional district.
Right, because they tell me that it depends on my, like, with my address.
Yes, it does.
Some parts of my address is saying that Harris, I'm in Harris, and the other part is in Oregon. So I just need to know who do I call as representative if I have.
Okay, if you'll go over, we'll, and talk to Rachel. Rachel, would you raise your hand, please? Go over to Rachel, and we'll, if you give her your address, we'll tell you right now, as best as we can. There are some people who seem to be in a twilight zone, where sometimes they will appear to be in one congressional district, and then literally, we've seen it shift to another. But that's unusual when that happens. So if you'll talk to Rachel, we'll do what we can to give you the information.
The other part of that question is, the gentleman that was speaking of the social security earlier, okay? Now, help me understand, because when we pay into social security, that is money that we have worked for, and that's our money. So what happens to our money when we, I mean, when it's sitting there? What is that?
Well, it's not sitting there.
I mean, no, no, I know it's not sitting there, I know it's being used, but as it's being used, from my understanding, okay, when our money is being used, and if you are of the age group that I am, when you become senior, that's when you need your money the most, okay? So when you get to a part of your life where you're in retirement stage and you need what you worked for, so when it becomes in jeopardy of being decreased, or like they were talking about, they said they promised President Obama that, I mean, President Biden, that they wouldn't mess with the social security, but the subject line keeps coming up. So can you help me understand what exactly do they do to prevent, I mean, what is it can be done to prevent this money from being in jeopardy for people of senior retirement age from being jeopardized or decreased?
The gentleman who's sitting in front of you is smiling. You should meet him.
I just talked to him, but I mean, as a person in Congress that has been there for a long period of time, what did you all do to, I mean, with the advocacy group that I'm with, with AARP, we fight for a whole lot of different things. And so my whole thing is that... And so my whole thing is that I understand that the bills are being paid. Money is, the government money is being, I mean, the usefulness of the money. But I want to know, how big of a fight is that for us to have protection and keep our money from being decreased?
Thank you for the question. I support your position. I have supported your position. But I will tell you that it's not unusual for me to meet people who, notwithstanding my supporting the position that they have, who don't understand why I have to have that position or why you have to have. Why are people doing this? And the money is not just there, as you corrected. And the money is being used as in the coffre of the federal government. And as I have said to you and many others, I don't understand why this problem has persisted and has been the way it is as long as it has. Because I meet many people and like you who are firemen. It happens with people in education in the state of Texas. I mean, there are probably more people in education who are victims than there are people who are employees combined. But it exists because you need an act of Congress to change it. And before you can get an act of Congress, you have to have a Congress that will act. And getting a Congress that will act is a lot different than having one who's here today who is with you. You have to have 218 people. And then you have to have a Speaker of the House who's going to allow that to come to the floor of the House. That's, and there's another way. You can have something called a discharge position where you get 218 people to sign onto it and for them to come to the floor of the House. But it's difficult to get 218 people to sign onto something that they would vote for if they had a vote. If it came up in the House, this would be resolved. But unfortunately, it does not come before a so we vote. I have signed onto legislation. I have spoken about this. I have done all that one person can do to bring about this change. But there is something you can do and others who feel some alone. You can talk to representatives who don't agree with you. Now, it's easy to talk to me about it because you have me, first of all, and of course, because I agree with you. But sometimes you have to step out of your comfort zone and talk to those people who differ with you because getting me to convince them is not going to be something that will achieve your ends. You probably need to have more people like yourself to say, "I want to see this changed." And we all have constituents that we listen to, so.
Where's a good start until I can talk to those people that disagree?
Well, we are all listening. So you can just, if you want to find out how people voted, you can Google how we voted on any given issue now. At one time, that was esoteric. It was somewhat, it was known to just a few people how people were voting. But now our voting records are out there and you can find out how we voted on things. And then you can talk to the people who are not voting for it. Talking to people like me doesn't bring about a lot of change if I agree with you. It's the people who differ that you have to talk to and get them to understand that this is important to you just as I understand this important to you. And if it could change with my vote, it would have changed years ago. I don't understand why it persists as a problem for us. Thank you for the question. Okay, number eight. So that you'll know, we have eight, 10, and nine left. Okay, yes, number eight, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Green. I've been asking your offices for years to be able to sit down and ask you a simple question. I've called your Houston office. I've been down there four or five times. I've led voicemails several times there. I've called your Washington office. I checked the box on your website for someone to call me back. And all those times, I've never had a one response back. And it was to this question. It was about the immigration issue that we have going on the southern border. Now, I've been an NGO for a number of years, a volunteer with three of the trafficking groups here in Houston. I've heard the stories. I see what's going on. The girls in the Candinas, the ones in the spas, the girls working on the streets. All of this is happening. Many of them have come from the southern border. And what I see is we currently have a policy says, "Yes, come across the border and use one word and you will come across the border and you will be in." The numbers are rising and they're getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And young ladies, women and children, we don't even want to speak about the things that are happening out there, out there in the fields, you know, in the brush, across the river. They're dying, they're dying in the trucks. It's not sustainable to say, "We can just welcome all these people in these numbers" because it's getting bigger. So my question is always been, and I have two questions, but I'm going to hold the other one. You know, I'll let other people speak. Is, is there going to be a point at which we have to say, "I'm sorry, but no more." We have to deal because over the last, how many years has it been? We've had a couple of million, tens of millions. I don't even know how many people we've had over the border. And not just the gotaways, the one where we have a thousand people here and the cartels and the drugs are able to come in over here. It's not working. It's broken. So my question is, is there going to be a point at which you're going to have to say, and be the mean parent and say, "I'm sorry, the border is closed until we get things ordered, until it's safe, until we know we can guarantee your safety." And these people aren't paying the cartels and they're in danger. We talk about slavery. They are in slavery, the cartels now because of the money they owe them for walking through their country. So is that going to be sustainable? And is your position going to always be, keep allowing them in these massive numbers?
That has not been my position. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Well, if you want to do what you said and close the border, we would have to change some laws. Because people, we have a law that allows asylum. These people who are seeking asylum to come to this country and say, "I'm seeking asylum. I'm being persecuted in my country and I would like to seek asylum in your country." And you're right that these are almost magic words as you put it. You're right, you really are. But once we hear that, then the way our laws have been written, we have to now give that person the opportunity to make the case. We can't just simply say no right there at the border. The border agent doesn't have that authority. Now, on the Title 42 that you were locked down, when we were having the pandemic, we could, for health reasons, say we're going to deny you access for health reasons. But because we no longer have the pandemic officially declared, we can't use Title 42 anymore. The courts have indicated that we can't use Title 42. So with the inability to utilize Title 42 and keep people, we'd have to change the law. I support comprehensive immigration reform because I do believe we need to know who's coming into the country. I know ingress and egress is important. But we don't have a Congress that is willing to tackle comprehensive immigration reform. The idea of just walling the country in has become the means by which we believe that the problem will be solved. If we want to, you can still then have people who show up and say, "I believe I'm being persecuted and I'd like to have an opportunity to make my case." And we would still have to do it. Wouldn't matter how thick the wall is, once they come to a border entry and they make that point to us, we still have this law. So we need to have comprehensive immigration reform. We would deal not only with that, but also with the status of people who've been here for many, many years, who are in line because they are lawfully in line. And they've been here for decades, some people more than 20 years, trying to lawfully gain admittance into the country. Lawfully. Comprehensive immigration reform could help us deal with that as well. But I, and I'm for that. And I'm willing to talk to anybody about it. I've said it on national TV many times that I support comprehensive immigration reform so we can take up all of these issues. And again, you have to have a Congress that's willing to act before you can get an act of Congress. I wish I could tell you, look, make me king and you'll get your. Okay, but I, I'm just, that was a joke. People were live streaming. I didn't mean that literally, okay? But we, we have to debate and come to some resolution as it relates to immigration reform. I appreciate your position.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. All right, we're now on number 10. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. This question was asked to me from a parent of a student at Palmer Elementary. And she states that right in front of the elementary school is a sign that states Palmer Plantation. And so along the lines of getting names changed, streets, names changed, how does she go about? Or is there a plan to start looking at renaming some of these schools?
I think that, I'm not familiar with this case to the extent that I know exactly where this school is. But you would use the same process.
Okay.
You would go through either your city council or your commissioners' court. It depends on, I assume that this is an incorporated area. So you have to go to the city council to get the city council to act. And then you've got to get the signatures from, I say the city council. The city council acts when it gets the signatures. And you have to get the signatures and the council to act. And I don't know whether this is in your district or.
It would be, I'll be in my car.
Okay, Councilmember Boni says he'll take you to his car and he'll talk to you more about it. And then, but now there's another aspect of, you have to pay to have the name changed. Not, you don't pay the city to, so the city can put the one in his coffre. There's a fee associated with putting the new name up, taking the old name down. So that has to be taken. Somebody's got to pay for that. And the city does not have to do that. So sometimes people are willing to take up a collection and pay for it. And then there's sometimes there are people who are willing to come forward and say, "I'll do this." But it does, you do have that as an impediment as well of paying for it. And I think that for just a short street like those in Missouri City, it costs around $2,000, $3,000 to do this. So it can, it's not really expensive, but it does have a fee associated with it. Okay, thank you. Number nine is the last. Where is number nine? Yes, ma'am.
It's almost over. My question is going to be, well, first of all, I want to thank you for the transportation, the ride, you know, the metro here in Missouri City. I don't live in Missouri City, but I was in a shelter in Ungul. And there were a lot of people there that wanted to work, but they didn't have transportation. So they would try to get jobs close and close might be a couple of miles. So they were walking in the heat. And, you know, so are you going to continue to improve transportation? I know you don't have jurisdiction in Ungul, but all over, like Houston needs to be improved, in my opinion. Poor people, a lot of poor people want to work, but they don't have transportation. They can't afford cars, some, and the cars now are really expensive. I can't even afford to get my car fixed. I was the only one that had, well, actually, there was one other person that had a car in this place in Ungul. So my thing is, if you improve the, in my opinion, if you improve transportation, it'll help the poor people get to work. And I know there's neighborhoods that don't like Metro bus and they don't like the poor people coming around and all this. But it will help these people too, if more people can work and improve their lives. It'll improve everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I concur with you. We need a better transportation system. I think we're improving, but there's a lot more that we have to do to improve the system. One of the things that I have been working on since I've been in Congress is the 98 rail line, which would move all the way from Stafford, Missouri City, all the way into the medical center. And I've been working on this since I've been in Congress. The 98 rail line. It is not easy to get these things done. Let me just give you some sense of what we have to deal with. Along 98, there is currently a rail line. They have the rights. They have the easement. They have the right to expand. And they are fairly proud of what they have. And they are not interested in sharing that with others. And I try to be very kind, using euphemisms inappropriate. So they're not interested in sharing this space. So we've had all kinds, I had the Secretary of Transportation in Houston at one time to look at this. The 98 rail line would just help so many people. If you've ever been out there on 98 at 5 o'clock, it can be bumper to bumper, all the way from near the medical center, all the way out to Stafford and Missouri City. So we, I'd like to see this changed. And it's not a matter of money as much as it is trying to convince the people that happen to have access to that land that it can be shared. And there's enough space, in my opinion, to put another line in. But they are pretty strong in their position and I haven't been able to convince them. But we're still working on it. Now, for other forms of transportation, I happen to think that we, a city that for too long did not expand our transportation options as Dallas did. If you go to Dallas, they expanded their options and those dollars were available for us to pass out to cities. They took those dollars and they put in the rail. But we were holding on to bus. And because of that, we missed out on the rail dollars. Now we're trying to pick up on the bus rapid transit dollars. And my hope is that we can do more of this so that we can help people who need to, not just because they're poor. There are people who would like to take a bus who are not poor because it would get them to where they'd like to go faster if you have a dedicated space for them to traverse. So we would like to see this dedicated space so that everybody can benefit from it. But I do appreciate people doing their transportation too because they do. And you're right, people can get to work and they will become more productive if they can get to work. Not everybody comes for a car. I do appreciate what you're saying and I thank you for saying it, okay?
And also it would improve the environment.
Yes. Well, we do want to make sure that we protect this environment that we have, without question. Well, friends, I'm going to thank all of you for being here as long as you have. Let's see. I'm told that I missed someone. It may have been number 19. Where is it?
Me. Oh. I just wanted to thank you. I came up to your office back in the spring. And right now, I know Congress is on hold. But I do want to thank you for your support for Alzheimer's. And I want to ask you to continue that support when we get a Congress moving again for the appropriations and the whatever. We did sign on for getting the new medication and talking to Medicare and getting that approved. And I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. Lady's question has to do with Alzheimer's and proper funding for it. Friends, this is something that we should all be concerned about. If we live long enough, there's a possibility that we could be impacted by this dreadful disease. It really is. And I'm supportive of funding it. I would hope that we would do more in the area of research. Over the Texas Medical Center, there's a lot of research going on in this area. You're right about the new products coming on the market, new drugs. Yes, all of these things are important and I'm a supporter of funding it. And thank you for your kind words. And as I was about to say to everybody, thank you for being here. I really appreciate you. For this number of people to be here at the end of a town meeting. For this number of people to be here at the end of a town meeting is remarkable. Either the food was very good or you had no place to go. I'm not sure. But I want to thank you for coming and for staying as long as you have. And I would just ask this of you as you do your part. Please, we all have a role that we can play. So do your part to try to make the world a better place for not only yourself, but for someone else. Please do your part. Ruth Smeltzer said it this, "Some measure their lives by days and years, others by heart throbs, passions, and tears. But the surest measure of the God's Son is what for others in your life."